Board of County Commissioners, back in session?
Commissioners, if you don't mind, item three of my report, it was Mr. Keith Bassett of Synergy. They represent the insurance company with the, and he needed to give an update on where we are with the roof over the current building.
Come on up, sir.
So if we could, so you can get to office, we've gone to Orlando for another project, then we could go back to the regular agenda, if you don't mind, Commissioner.
Hey, good afternoon, thank you. Keith Bassett with Synergy, appreciate you moved me up so I can get to a meeting in Orlando. Just to give you an update on the Weems Hospital Roof Replacement Project, there's been another change from ACHA's opinion on approvals versus not approvals. They initially gave me a verbal saying I could do the project as long as patient care services stayed underneath the hospital roof. I sent them an email to get that in writing, and then three days later they came back and said, oh no, this still has to go through a full review process. I reached out to some of my contacts that I know have done work with hospitals in the past, and they told me that I have to have an architectural engineering firm involved to even get ACHA to formally approve anything. So I've retained the services of G W G out of Tallahassee, who has a long history of working with ACHA and medical facility projects. I'll be meeting with them Friday morning at nine o'clock at the hospital. They are aware of the time constraints and the necessities of getting this through the approval process as quick as feasible, so that we can get a roof going on that hospital. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, we appreciate the time and the effort you're putting in, because you, we know you're doing a lot of, I've been keeping up with it, and it's not your fault, so...
Yes, sir, and anytime y'all have questions about it, you can always reach me through Mr. Marone. He's got my cellphone and email, and he knows he can pretty much contact me 24/7, so. All right, thank you.
If it's gonna be in the long haul, just let us know.
Yes, sir, will do.
Thanks, sir. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Marsha Johnson, Clerk of the Court.
I have one action for board, needs board action, is relative to the value adjustment board, and I need you to appoint two county commissioners to be on the value adjustment board, and also a citizen member who owns homestead property within the county, and that member cannot be a member or employee of any taxing authority, and Mr. Donnie Gay has graciously agreed to serve, again, if that's the will of the board. So I need two commissioners and Mr. Donnie Gay appointed.
What date is that, Ms. Johnson?
We don't have a date yet, trail notices are gone at, or will be gone at, and then we need to have a board in place once that happens. So, last year they only had one meeting, I think, and it's all just according to how many petitions get filed.
We had one, that's all we had.
Yeah.
Well, I ain't gotta do no more. I ain't gotta be to the election no more, so I, I'll do one.
He's going to let, I mean, he's doing the election.
You want to do it?
Mr. Burke said he would.
Me and him's doing the election, canvassing board.
I am doing canvassing board.
Oh, are you, maybe Mr. Noel do it?
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Lockley and Commissioner Massey to the value adjustment board.
And Mr. Donnie Gay.
And Mr. Donnie Gay as a citizen.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? Just let me know a date, so I can put it on the calendar.
We will.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, that pass, and out of here.
Okay, my second item was just for information. I believe Aaron gave you all a copy of the county's audit report for seventeen eighteen years, and it's been posted on the county's website, which is per Florida statutes. So our audits were very good this year, and the county as a whole is in a, has a good financial standing. Any questions?
No, that's good news.
It is.
And once you look at your audit, if you have any questions about it, you know, let me know or Aaron.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Alan Pearce, Restore Coordinator.
I was gonna say one thing, the gentleman from the insurance company and the hospital roof issue left, but I want to say, commend him and to let you all know that they're doing a great job. That's a cradle to grave sort of association we have with four legal cities, where they're helping us not only with the insurance coverage, but also getting the contractor, making sure it's done right. I mean, I just say that, and I was hoping Aaron's gonna be here to sort of reinforce that, you know, that legal, every now and then you all are approached by people wanting, you know, to consider other sort of insurance carriers, and they do a great job for us. They provide a service that goes beyond the standard, you know, private practice, private sector service, so they do a great job.
And let me just add to that, under the League of Cities, under your old insurance company, what would happen when we got sued, so you had a, and this actually happened, we had seven counts of a lawsuit, well, the old insurance company said, well, we'll cover two or three or less than seven, but you have to pay to cover the rest, and that frankly ended up costing the county not only your insurance premium, but additional attorney's fees for myself or the outside counsel. Under the League of Cities, if even one count of a multi-count is complaint is covered, they cover all the counts, so there's an additional benefit.
Good.
But just keep in mind, when some people come back wanting to consider insurance, these really do a, excellent job. Okay. All right, my report has a few items in it, but hopefully nothing too controversial. The first one is, this is just for your, for the record, provide the board with a signed copy of the F D E P Algarve Point Beach Restoration Application Resolution that was approved at the July sixteenth meeting. The application was developed by Mr. Mike Nebraska, M R D associate, based upon the direction I provided, Mr. Nebraska. The project is closely 1.1 mile in length, centered on the old K O A, which is now county-owned property, and will protect the section of Algarve Drive and Chip Morrison as subject to storm damage. The project asked for $200,000 from the 2021 legislature to complete the design and permitting for the project, and then an estimated $10 million for total construction costs, $5 million from the state and $5 million from local sources. That presumably would be the restore, or restore funds. In the application, the county is asking for the maximum state assistance, which is 50% of the total project cost, and in doing so, the county will be proposing a hundred-car parking lot and a bathroom at the old K O A. I don't want anyone to think we're misleading anybody. This county, the county is also saying that it has the ability to find its share of the funds. The application does not commit to where the county funds are coming from, as this still needs to be worked out. Matching share of the construction funds could come out of the county's share of restore funds, and the maintenance funds could come out of a combination of sources, including M S B U assessment, parking fees, or other options. I've asked Mr. Nebraska to give me, to give me a proposal for you all to look at regarding the development of the assessment and the maintenance funds. I mean, he's a very expert on this kind of stuff, so let's see what he, what he comes up with. So we still need to develop that part.
Let me ask you quick.
Yes, sir.
On this parking lot, we gonna charge?
It's something for y'all to decide. I mean, you have the ability to do that if you want to. If you think it'll enhance revenue without de, without causing a problem somewhere else, that's your decision.
I mean, it can help do some things over there.
Yes.
Help you do charge, help for that area.
Yeah, I will say now this, and I learned this actually after the last meeting I was here, the State of, the Ballpoint State Park is now charging parking on all parts of its property. It used to be that if you're down there on the beach, no one would monitor you. Apparently now, I think it's $5 a day, I think is the fee. So we have a baseline for what's gonna cost the park down there, in the state park, that's $5 a day.
And they charge to go in it, right?
Well, that's $5 coverage to go in, that's, that's, it's a, it's a honor system, Mr. Chairman, where you put a five, you get a, you get an envelope out, and you tear off part and hang on your windshield, but it's $5 for your vehicle or for you to go in. So that gives us a baseline. So yeah, I think it's open, I mean, what we don't want to do, if we, and this is way premature, is to charge a fee that then causes people not to use the parking lot, and they still go down in the residential areas. That's what we're trying to avoid. We want to make sure they, they leave the residential areas alone, that's what we're trying to get at.
Some of them gonna do that anyway, but, I mean, you know.
Well...
It's not like we trying to get over on them.
Right.
I'm talking about, you do, if you charge them, and you put the money back in that area.
Absolutely, absolutely, goes back in the area, absolutely.
I mean, it's a win-win situation for everybody.
Right, right. Yeah. Okay, so we'll see what, when M R D comes back with their, with their proposal.
Thanks for that.
I will say, this is now August, we're not gonna hear anything from legislature until, you know, next session, so we have some time to work on all this sort of stuff, but M R D thought we had a pretty good chance for the design. He advised me, though, that because D E P already funded this project once, and it was turned down by the voters, you know, so we didn't do it, D E P had put up construction money once before, and so probably this time, they're gonna want evidence from the county before the 2022 legislative session, before they authorize $5 million construction money, they're gonna want to know they're gonna go through with this. So by that time, we're gonna have the funding sources in place for maintenance. So we have a little time to work at, but I just, he warned, he gave, I want to give that advice, that, you know, they're probably gonna put a threshold to say, prove that you're gonna do this project before we go to legislature and ask for $5 million.
Yeah, that's why I say you charge them a little bit, and that'll help out on the maintenance.
Yeah, okay.
A little bit, you know, it ain't gonna cover the whole thing, but it'll help out.
Okay, so that's, I remember, I remember two is a simple letter I did talk to Commissioner Jones about before I wrote, because it's in his district. Provide the board with a copy of letter of support I wrote as Restore Coordinator for the project. The Aner has submitted for a proposed study of how to protect St. George Island from storms and other changing environmental conditions. The deadline for the grant was July 31st, which is before the board meeting. The letter of support does not obligate the county for any funds, but does say we would help hold some meetings. That was a sort of essential part of it. Item number three, board action to sign FDOT supplement of J P A to increase the funds available at the airport apron rehabilitation by 351,002 73. The county has signed an initial J P A for the apron rehab in May of 2019, so just a couple months ago, and now FDOT is offering to increase the funds available to the county to make it a total of 779,711. So I need a board action to accept these funds.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor for, by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion on that? What, what do, what do you do?
They will be redoing the asphalt, the pavement in front of the FBO and on some of the other taxway and aprons that need, that need repairs. And FD, I'll be honest, this is one of the, and I say this on behalf of AVCON, who has a good rapport with FDOT, this is one of the benefits of having engineers who know the system. This money was offered to us, you know, 100% funds, because they realize the airport's a good project, a good project, and AVCON does a good job managing our projects out there, so, you know, they said, hey, and I think it's also a partial payback, I say this to you all, for the generator we didn't get.
We didn't get it?
Remember that after the hurricane, we were, thought we were gonna get a generator to do the fuel farm, and the FDOT over-promised their funding for the generator. So Marianna got a generator, and Panama City got a generator, but they promised us we would get a generator in the future when they get more funds from the federal government, but I'm kind of wondering whether this was a little make up, but, I mean, whatever, we'll take the money.
But we're still getting a generator, explain, remember that?
Well, we are applying for the generator through the Triumph application, yeah.
Triumph.
But that made that application a little, a little dicey, because it shows that our match is much less. I was gonna use $100,000 from DOT, you know, as a match for the Triumph money, well, now I can't do that, so our matches, and I talked to Susan Skelton yesterday, anyway, but they're, they're reviewing, they haven't turned us down, so hopefully we'll get a positive response in a couple weeks.
What do, what do a general, I mean, what, what one of them thing call, generator?
Uh, the generator, big enough, it was $100,000. I mean, it was, the key, it had to be a three-phase generator.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's, that was made the expense go up, and you had to be, and it had, it's situated out there, of course, you gotta protect it from the elements, and, but about, we estimated about $100,000 for the generator to serve the fuel farm. How many KWs it is, Mr. Chairman, I can't remember, but...
That one of them big one, like it would, that to the...
I presume so, but three phases was the critical thing.
Okay.
Okay, did we vote?
No.
I don't have a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, that pass, unanimous.
Okay, Michael Marone, now I'm gonna read my item number four, but it might be altered by what you're gonna talk about, regarding USDA?
Actually, they have an item, but I'll, I'll chip in, you can go ahead.
Okay. So, item number four, inform the board that Michael Marone asked me to contact Ms. Beth Frost, D E O staff, regarding a legislative appropriation for Frank County obtained by Senator Mumford. And I apologize, this is now August, and we're just talking about legislative appropriations, but you'll see why it's so late coming. The Senator's office had asked, had asked for Hurricane Michael recovery estimates shortly before the session began, and so I don't say there, here, but that was back in February. And so the figures sent to the Senator back in February was the best estimate. The county was not contacted during the session, was not aware of any negotiations that went on, but at the end of the session, and after a long delay before the governor signed the budget, because you'll remember, the session ended like in May 15th, he didn't sign the budget till almost June 30th. So it was a long delay, for whatever reason. And then D E O took a while to understand that they'd received this money. So the budget was signed, and $750,000 has been approved by the legislature that went to D E O to assist Franklin County. Now, we didn't know that's where it was going, we had no idea, but that's where it ended up. The D E O received the money from the legislature, and Ms. Beth Frost has been assigned the task of developing a scope of work that Franklin County agrees to perform in order to receive the funds. In discussing the range of work, I asked Ms. Frost if the county could utilize some of the funds to install a fire suppression system in the armory that has been required by the state fire marshal, state fire marshal, and you all know about that, and to fix a leak in the roof. I explained to Ms. Frost that the armory has been and will be used as a meeting place during post-hurricane activities, and the fire marshal's order limits the capacity of the building. After discussion with other D E O staff, Ms. Frost said the county can utilize some of the funds on the armory, so that'll be both, both those two items. And then I talked to, the chairman asked me to consider one more item, I'll get to in a second. Mr. Carrington has contacted Warren Emo for the recent cost estimates of the system that's already been designed and is ready to go out for bid. An early estimate for the complete system, and I don't have the current cost from Emo, but this is no design cost, this is just, you know, construction, is approximately $350,000. The county had received $100,000 to state fire marshals last year to assist in the project, but that was obviously not enough funds, so the county had talked about obtaining the difference with either another historic preservation grant or another allocation of T D C funds. The county, through Mark Carrington, did apply for a preservation grant, and we did not score high enough. My recommendation to the board is that we allocate enough funds from this D E O grant, combined with the existing fire marshal grant, to install a complete fire system in the armory and fix the roof. This will then bring the armory into compliance and allow full use of the building. The remainder of the D E O funds can go towards the local match of any of the FEMA projects that we currently have going on, and that's an unknown number. Since the FEMA projects are very slowly working through the system, it is unknown what the final match requirements will be. Add to the uncertainty, it's possible that the state will change the local match requirement from 12.5% to 5%, since Hurricane Michael was upgraded to a category storm, five storm. I have discussed this local match requirement with Ms. Brownell, and she says it appears at this time the local match is still 12.5%, but she agrees it could change in the future. So the chairman asked me to consider also in the D E O, or in the repairs of the armory, painting at least the bottom part, so that it's enhanced. And I talked to Mark Carrington, Mr. Chairman, about that yesterday, and I was wrong when I made one statement to you, that there may be lead paint in there, but if there is, the only lead paint you have to remove is the part that's peeling off. So if there's sections that are peeling, you do have to scrape those down and do some protective action, but if it's lead paint and it's on the wall, you can paint over it without any, any remedial action. And most of the paint's on the walls, so Mark is gonna look and get some cost estimates on painting down there, so that's one way the money can be used, but then why, after I'd written this, Michael Marone came up with another idea.
Well, he was, we've been working on that. I've approached USDA, and there's a possibility, a very strong possibility, and the money should be coming really soon, I got a word about that, that we can do a 75, 75%, 25%, where they grant 75%, we pay 25 to get the suppression system into the armory. I didn't ask about the leak in the roof, so I don't know yet, and I can't, they're aware, they have a conference going on, I won't answer till next week. So, we have to figure out together here, what is the best use of the money that we have, and to get the roof done, get the fire system in there, and then what, and the painting, if possible.
So my recommendation is, because I don't think D E O's gonna care, I mean, they've already said you can use it on the armory, so I think they'll be satisfied using it as a match on the armory, matching with the 75% of USDA money, so that spends less D E O money that we can then do some other things with that D E O might agree to.
What is it, Mr. Chairman, what is, what is the limit on USDA money? Can we fully complete what we have designed for the armory?
I don't know, because Warren just actually sent his...
Because, you know, we had some landscaping, and some other things that needed to be done, the sidewalk out front needs to be redone.
I think this covers both the, the roof and the...
Oh, wood, I'm sure it was.
Yeah, and the suppression system, so...
Yeah, they got, they're heading a budget of 825 to 850, all work as outlined.
Yeah, I don't think that includes the painting, though. So what, Aaron doesn't realize yet, is either tomorrow, Thursday, we gotta sit down and do the pre-application for USDA, so that when they get back from conferences at their desk, surprise, so, yeah.
But, but let's, I'm gonna make the math really simple, so if this was a million dollars, and 25% of a million dollars is 250, that's still less than the 350 I told D E O.
Right.
So I think they'll be okay with it.
So I'm gonna proceed with the USDA...
And do more projects.
Right.
Yes, sir. So I'm gonna proceed with the USDA grant system for this, and see how far we go with it, and then the rest, we'll get, or match, we could get D E O to kick in, that's, that's what we think is the best course for...
Well, you're gonna, oh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Michael, you're gonna have to start dealing with D E O and all these others when Alan comes up with his next item. I mean, who else is gonna do this stuff?
So today wasn't hard enough for me, you just, yeah, I know.
We're gonna pile it on, bro. That's the good news. We're gonna pile it on.
Oh, that's the good news, Commissioner, oh, my bad, thank you. But yeah, so that's, that's the way I wanna, we wanna go forward, if you guys are good, good, if the commission is good with that.
Either we can pile it on Aaron, which one y'all want?
She's gonna stand behind Marsha and say...
Somebody's starting to deal with each other.
Aaron may look simple and innocent, but gee...
Well, she's doing the application, I mean, she's well aware of what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I want to ask one quick question. So do we already have $100,000 from the state?
Yes, we got it from last year. Yes, and we don't have it in our possession, from the state park, yes.
And remember, at some point, too, T D C had almost, had also committed $100,000...
But I'm trying to avoid going back...
But if we don't have to do that, I'd rather not, I'm with Alan, and that's 100%. That money could be used for something else.
Yeah, well, it's not in the budget, it's been tenderly approved for next year, I'm doing that.
But if you can get enough to complete it, that's what we want.
Yes, sir.
Get it on over with.
Yes, sir.
Then we can move to submit.
Yeah, because I know this fire watch kills fondly, because he has to put someone there every single time there's a vet inside the yard.
It's half hours, that's time and a half.
Oh, yeah, time and a half.
Time and a half.
So, okay, if you guys...
Do we need to vote today, or what do you want?
I, I don't know, how, you know, what...
Can we just go in board direction or not?
Sounds like what you're looking for is to provide information to the board, and for you guys to put together the information, and maybe come back with a plan.
I would say, let, let...
Because it looks like you're still developing things to me, but...
USDA, see what they approve, and then come back.
Forward, proceed.
That'd be good. Sound like a concept plan.
Yeah, I'm good with that, I just want to make sure what we're doing.
Okay, let me go to something I thought on my report, yeah. So, I should have put this on the board, I just, that's the nice thing about being older, I can say, like, I just forgot. So, Monday was the deadline for the public comment for our planning grants for Restore. We have two planning grants in there, one is the planning grant to design a dune restoration program for the county, the other's a planning grant for stormwater improvements on St. George Island. Fri, Monday was the deadline. We have a few letters of support, which we need in the file. As we speak, Langton is putting together the packet of information that we'll send to Treasury, if you get the Treasury bill August 15th. Treasury has up to 60 days to review what we submit, assuming they don't have any additional questions. So if they had no questions, then by October 15th, we could then begin the process for advertising for consultants to do the work, but we probably, we expect that there'll be some questions with Treasury. Treasury's asked questions about every other project, so why won't they ask about us? So I'm gonna give it 30 days, 45 days, so my comment, my statement to you all is, you don't need to take any more action, Langton's gonna submit this stuff at any cost to you all to Treasury, and that I would hope by January, we would have a final approval from Treasury to, what we're trying to do, as well as advertise bids for consultants to do the work. There, say there are two projects that we're looking at right now, of course, you can always add some later, depending on cost, there's $9 million of Restore Funds available to the county right now. So if we use $5 million now, I'll get a point, then you have $4 million for these other two projects right now, for construction, and that would be, and I just made this, and I told Langton, just cut it in half, I have no idea what the cost will be, $2 million for dune restoration, $2 million for stormwater. We'll know what the cost will be when the planning study's done, and then you can, you know, alter...
Figure it out.
Figure it out. And if you have to phase things in, you can always phase things in, because every year, starting now, you're gonna get about a million and a half dollars a year from additional money to Restore. So, so we'll know, we'll know more of the, I mean, you'll get reports back from Langton over the coming, probably in October or November, if there are any more questions from Treasury, but hopefully in January, you'll be advertising. Okay, let me do one more thing also. Update on Algarve Point Road, Clay Kennedy is not here, you all, and I think Commissioner Bolt has been informing you all, and the attorney's been involving, we are potentially relocating the turn from Tom Roberts on Algarve Drive to make it a better, safer, direct route. Everybody wants it. The property owner that I failed to succeed with is now being much more cooperative with other people, so, so that's going forward. It is causing Clay to have to watch out how the design goes, because the stormwater, you know, it's gotta go somewhere. So it's possible that on August 18th, Commissioner Bolt, we will not be opening up bids, because this design is in process, and, you know, sometime it has to be stabilized in time for contractors to put a bid out.
Yeah.
So I just want everybody to know that, you know, we are in process, and it's possible they will be open the first meeting in September. Clay is, as we speak, he's not here now, because right now, he's trying to finish the stormwater design up. We've already advertised, so there are six bidders who want packets, so we know people are interested in the road.
Great.
The question is, can we get the packet to them in time for them to respond by August 18th?
Okay.
If they can't, and Clay will be in contact with them, and they, if the bidders are saying, you're putting us under pressure, we can't respond, then, then I'm, I'm telling you all, and I hope you all will agree, that I will then tell Clay postpone it two weeks, so that, so we have adequate, proper, good bids.
What do you think, Michael?
Mr. Chairman, I did contact Mr. Kennedy at the end of last week for an update on where he was with the surveys, and that is the bottleneck at this point. He has surveys and legal descriptions for the actual intersection and its, I guess, reconfiguration. What he does not have, and what he's sending a survey crew out into the field, and tells me he will have sometime this week, is the trade land for Mr. Norman, which is the property that's north of his property, that crosses the water district's property and gets to the canal and Mr. Norman's existing dock. No one has reached out to Mr. Norman at this point to have a conversation, because, I mean, and I'm looking at it from my viewpoint, if someone wants me to consider an offer in an exchange, don't tell me about it, show me the drawing. So until I get the drawing, neither myself or Commissioner Bolt, or whoever's willing to take the lead in the communication, can talk with Mr. Norman. So I would suggest, at this point, August 18th is not a realistic date to receive a legal description, have a conversation with Mr. Norman, and reach an agreement, so I So I, I would say probably even the first meeting in September may be a bit of a push.
All right, Michael, this is what we're gonna do though. I, I say this, and correct me if it's not adequate to you, it's adequate to the engineer. If we, if, we are proceeding with the road going in the original configuration. And if by August eighteenth, we have all the stormwater issues worked out for that configuration and bids in, we can open the bids, accept the low bid, and then do a change order. Because it may be, it may be October, who knows when we finish negotiating with Mr. Norman? So I would rather.
Okay, we're talking apples and I misunderstood, sorry.
Okay, I would, I would rather open the bids if we have all the details for, for a proper bid on that road, because I don't know when we'll finish negotiations.
Correct.
And, and, and relocating the road north is just a simple change order, a little bidder, um, you know.
Okay, that'll be fine then.
So.
Well, we, if, when you do the change order, if it be more money, we gonna have that?
We'll have to go to, yeah, yeah, we'll have to, oh, notice FEMA. And we, we're having a meet with FEMA next week anyway. We're gonna notice FEMA that we have this option out there. I, I don't think it should be a problem because the road is moving north. They better be happy with it, but yes, that's, that's a concern. The worst backup is that FEMA says, well, that's your problem. Well, then we will have to deal with the ballpoint trust fund for which there is some money there, you know, we'll just have to deal with it.
Okay.
As long as we can locate the money.
Yes, sir.
I'll be just fine. Mr. Marone is wondering what direction we're going in at this point. Are we moving forward to open bids at the middle, second meeting in August, Alan?
Yes, we still are, but I will know by, by the end of this week whether that's reasonable. Because we have to give the contractors two weeks' notice. And so Clay is hoping to get this stuff out today. If he doesn't.
We have to readvertise.
No, I don't know what you do, because all the, all the.
If they need two weeks, that's self-explanatory.
Well, we'll look at it this way. The, the ad said that you had to contact Prebleish for a set of bids. So you weren't contacting us. So everybody interested in bids has been noticed they gotta contact Prebleish. So the question is, do they just do a, there's, there's a notice process, a, a, what do you call it, a bid amendment? Addendum, an addendum process, Michael, where you don't have to readvertise, but you notice everybody who might, is contacted. Okay, cool.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would say that the, uh, the three stooges here have not gotten their heads together before we talked to you. So I would say let's just hold things in the balance, continue moving forward. If the plan doesn't work out, staff will notify you of the change.
Right, there you go.
Sorry for this building the airplanes, we're flying it.
It's all right.
Okay, 'cause I, 'cause me, I don't know if I'm the co-pilot or the engineer or, I'm getting ready to get off the plane.
You're the tail gunner.
So I'm the tail gunner, so I'm getting ready to go.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, item number five. As the board is aware of conversations Mr. Marone had with the board during the budget workshops, I have told him I want to phase out my role as Restore Coordinator of the County. The opportunity came up when Ms. Barfield informed Mr. Marone that she would not be returned to work. With that position needing to be filled, I inform Mr. Marone that I no longer want to serve as Restore Coordinator or as grant contact lays on for several programs that I've been working on. And then I recommend to Mr. Marone that he use this opportunity to hire someone to take over all my remaining duties. I will be, I will be available as a resource, but I don't want to be a point of contact for any projects in the future. The big picture issues I've been working on include Restore Coordination, Alligator Point Issues, Triumph Coordination, Airport Issues, Consortium Contacts, Core of Engine Dredging Contact, and Island View Property Recovery. To a lesser degree, I do some little writing and assist Mr. Marone with other public content. And gentlemen, it has no issues, no conflict, it's just, I'll be sixty-four in September, and I saw this as an opportunity for Mr. Marone to get some professional help in there, uh, with the, with the current budgetary things you have available, a little bit more money. And I think it's a good move for everybody. I mean, I know it's a transition, but I just, I just think now is the time to do it.
Mr. Chairman. Mike? Sir?
Ready for some more?
Well, let's go to item nine in my report, and I swear between Alan, Whitney, and Sharon, it's gotta be my cologne. I swear, I, I don't know what it is. But anyway, so this narrative is a follow-up to Mr. Pearson's report on his item, on his desire to phase out of his role as the Restore Coordinator along with other stated duties. As I see it, there are two major roles to consider. One is the Grant Special Project Management and the other is Planning. Of the two, the Grant Special Project Management is a priority and should be addressed as soon as possible. We have some time to address the planning role, as Mr. Kirinton, your county planner, as of this morning, has no plans to retire, resign within the near future. A Grant Special Project Coordinator could address Restore and Triumph Coordination, Consortium Contacts, Economic Opportunity Coordination, FDOT Lab Certification, State Grant Coordination, Alligator Point Issues, at least some of them. Uh, the Core Dredging Project, uh, where am I, and Contacts, Island View Park Recovery, and some of the airport issues. My recommendation is to advertise for Grants and Special Project Coordinator with certain, certain education and experience requirements, and create a job description that would speak to these responsibilities. The salary for this position would be thirty-five thousand plus benefits, which would be funded from twenty-five thousand dollars from the vacant administrative assistant position, plus a transfer of funds from professional services line item where Mr. Pearson's was, is paid from, to cover the additional cost. That's my proposal to help cover some of these issues and work towards the future.
President of the Board.
So moved.
Sir.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Jones, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that passes none.
So we have to have a third retirement party for Mr. Pearson.
There we go.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm gonna, you know, seriously, I still will be around, but this just makes it easier for everybody in the process to work more smoothly with, uh, you know, somebody else getting.
In your mind, it works more smoothly.
Yes, in my mind, Mike's.
Yeah.
In my mind, it's gonna be chaos. What's your date on your birthday?
September twenty-sixth, that'll be sixty-four.
That'll be it?
Sixty-four.
No, I'm out. We haven't got the person hired, we know, I don't know, but that's, he asked them on my birthday.
We don't have a date certain run out?
No, I don't have a date certain. But what has happened is the first time she gets hired, or he or she gets hired, I'm gonna learn, I'm gonna run one IT trip, hanging all my emails forward to somebody else.
That'll be the day, yeah. Michael.
Well, on the, on the early side, thank you for your service.
I would've given the same gift Shula gave him last time.
Say, Michael, just a comment. Just one comment. Um, with regard to this position you're proposing and the advertising, you know, I, I'm guessing that the benefit package that this county offers a potential employee is probably worth twenty-three to twenty-five percent of their salary. Now, if it's appropriate, not only are you talking about the job description, but the, the sustainability of the benefit package that this county has for a potential employee should be, I think, bragged upon in the ad in some way.
Okay, yeah, we do that. Yes, sir, we do.
You draw that?
We explain, explain about health, yeah, health insurance and retirement.
Yep, I think that's a good thing.
We do, we do.
Okay.
Thank you.
In the mood. Next on the agenda, the Mike, with the Michael Marone County Coordinator.
Let's go straight to item number four, which is an update for the community action east point, limerick fire items that Angela, yes, she is, of course she is. Okay, uh, item eight, there was a RV camper trailer at six oh, and I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm gonna read all three, and it's basically one motion should cover all three. It's, I'm just saying some of that activities has happened since we met last, okay? What, what I did, there was a RV camper trailer at six oh one Ridge Road that had to be moved in order for the new permanent manufactured trailer, missed that word, to be placed and set up on the property. The purchase of a twenty-foot hose along with some additional plumbing was necessary in order to connect sewer to the manufactured home. Since time was of an essence, I approved this four hundred and fifty dollar expenditure. B, uh, at the July sixteen meeting, there was a request to spend up to three hundred dollars to repair a broken gas line at seven oh one Ridge Road, which was authorized by this board. I authorized a payment of two, three twenty-four seventy-seven, which was the actual amount of the invoice. And finally, I authorized a three hundred and twenty-four dollar ninety-nine cent payment to repair damaged bathroom vent that was causing leaks in the unit located at six, six, seven Ridge Road. All three, I already authorized, I just need you guys to make a motion to ratify my actions.
So moved.
Sir.
I got a motion on the floor. By Commissioner Mastin. Second by Commissioner Jones. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that passes none.
Item five, I'm not sure, Fonda mentioned this this morning, but there was, uh, I received a report that someone tried to gain access to Allentbody Ward Seafood Landing Park's museum building by breaking the lock on the freezer door. Fortunately, it appeared that access was limited to that one room. I contacted both an access alarm and a video security company for quotes. I received a quote, which was attached from Vector Security for an access alarm system. Uh, and that's the system with the, with the motions, and I should've explained more, the motions, the, uh, the door sensors and everything else. This is not a video security system. This is just access to all the buildings. Anybody breaks in, trips the dorm, um, sensor or motion inside of one of the rooms, the alarm is gonna go off. Um, it'll ring at a central station, and they will then turn, call the, um, Sheriff's Department dispatch, uh, to let them know that someone's breaking, uh, has, you know, one of the alarms are tripped.
We're being in progress?
Yes, um, uh, for, for this price, uh, where am I, for the two fifty-six installation, that's one thing. Forty, forty-nine ninety-five monthly monitoring fee, that includes, uh, not to give away all the secrets, but that includes, uh, Verizon, uh, wireless contact, so you cannot cut the phone line to turn off the alarm. It's all wireless, so there's no way for them to stop it when they get there, okay?
So moved.
Yeah. Sir.
Yeah. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Perry, second by Commissioner Jones, discussion. Now, he said this morning that it was some other place.
Yes.
It, it deepened. Is anybody check on need for them?
Commissioner, not to put Fonda on the spot, but I wasn't aware they had that many break-ins until he said that this morning. I knew of this one, and I knew of one concession that, but he said that already had a camera system, so I was impressed. So I gotta go talk to them about some of these other spots and see what we need to.
One was in Carabelle outside of Carabelle, the old, uh, state office out there?
Yeah.
They tried to steal both the trucks, they stole a bunch of weed, he was long, he piled on side of the road.
Yes, they were coming back to get it.
They, well, they, they didn't come back and get it, had it piled on side of the road we found it the other morning out there.
Well, get with Fonda.
That's where y'all fixed moved the ambulance service to.
Yes, sir, I know.
Get with Fonda and come back with us later to see what we need to do about some security on that.
Yes, sir.
For his camera wise and stuff like that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Good.
Mike, can this be included on the annex building in Carabelle as you're doing this realignment with the ammises and all?
Mm-hmm.
As part of expenses?
Yeah, I mean, as part of the.
I'm sorry, part of the project?
Restoration as you're doing, yeah. On that particular side. The, uh, the concession, like Mr. Commissioner likes to say, you need to address that with Fonda. Some of them have cameras and stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
See if we need any upgrades to that.
Yeah. Of course, we, we gonna catch him, we'll slow walk him down.
So you were making your motion, Commissioner Parrish, to include the old state building east of Carabelle for the alarm system?
Well, yeah, but, but he's actually, we're already doing some restoration to that building, or he's supposed to be getting some prices.
Yeah, proposal for that, that could just include it in the proposal.
So he can include that with his project proposal when he brings it back to the board?
All ready. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that passes none.
Okay, we addressed item six earlier. Um, item seven, uh, during the last week's budget workshop, the board agreed to add, uh, seventy-five hundred to, seventy-five hundred dollars to the building department's budget that would allow for a new full-time building inspector. This inspector will work with the part-time billing official and will have one year to complete the necessary courses and pass the required test to become the county's, new county's billing official. Should staff begin the interview process now, or should we wait until after the budget public hearings? Uh, my, my natural tendency to tell you, let's wait until after the budget public hearings in case something changes, but I didn't want to deal it, delay it further if you guys wanted me to move ahead with, move ahead with it.
I just seen, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I just seen move on forward with it.
Okay.
That, that'd be my motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
By Commissioner Parrish.
Sir.
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any more discussion on that?
We did go to the miller's rate, I don't think we have a problem.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that passes none.
Also at your budget workshops, there was a discussion on a proposed new salary for the vacant library director position. The board rejected, sorry, the board rejected the proposed sixty-one thousand dollar salary submitted by the library advisory board. But discussed the salary amount between forty-one thousand and forty-five thousand. The library advisory board would like this board to agree on a salary so they can search for, so they can continue their search for a new library director.
I think it should be done. They were looking. At the school, school system thought them people offered. Master's degree. Thirty-five, thirty, I think.
Thirty-five was a bachelor's, I think, I think it was thirty-seven.
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 That's what the other were getting. And they want all these humongous figures, and it's like, we got a person in him doing the same, in the high, like, taking Allen's place, you ain't gonna start them off with thirty-five. And they, they doing all kind of grants and everything else. They doing more than, I believe they be doing more than a library director. So I don't see why we being forced to pay that kind of money because of what a board said. This the board was supposed to make them decision, not the advisory board. I mean, hey, they gonna come in here and, and put these over humongous figures on us. And we got people with twenty-five, thirty years, and they, it, 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 it don't be fair to them. I mean, every, every job, I think, I don't think they should get no forty-five thousand dollars started.
What do you think? I have another thought that might complement.
About thirty-eight. But who started thirty-five?
We got a girl in Carabelle, she got a, going to, great, get a degree, the girl in East Point trying to get a degree. Give each one a couple thousand dollar raise and let one be, one, one and one of the other. That would be about four thousand dollars. Know what I'm saying?
And, Michael, didn't you send us a note that it was a suggestion that we might share a fully credentialed librarian between the Appalachian Cola and the county?
Yes, someone sent a recommendation.
Yes.
We should consider, uh, talking to the city of Appalachia about their, uh, director.
Yep.
See if we can some way, you know.
Bundle funds, in a way?
Uh.
Here, here's the thing about that, though. That was a campaign pitch from somebody's running for an office that you don't know if they're gonna get it or not. So we don't need to be basing any of our discussion on something that's thin air right now.
I mean, it wasn't, it was not a city official, you.
Yeah, it's not, somebody's campaigning, so.
My, my concern with that is, is if, if you did it in a local or with, with the city of Appalachia and you commit to put so many dollars towards it, and they commit to put so many dollars towards it, and then something happens and the county don't like what the library director's doing, whether that be spends all her time in Appalachia and none at the county libraries, I mean, there's a lot of different scenarios that could play out. What do you do in the meantime? If the county wants to get rid of it, then we ain't got a, uh, a library director, but then we got money allocated to help Appalachian Cola fund that position. What do you do in the meantime, 'cause we don't have another budget process until the following year, so how all that works, I don't know.
Will that director be a county employee or a city employee that we subsidize and is, uh?
It's like, it's like you're working for two, two governments, and who's the, who's the lead?
Yeah.
Who's the lead agency, who's, who does she answer to, the county board or to the city board?
And if she's.
Or either one of them, I mean, you know, it's a lot of issues. Not saying I'm opposed to it, but I'm just saying, and I don't know how this is gonna work.
Well, we, we had that, 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 that had come before it before. And what happened was, they wanted, they come and asked us about the library, the county and the city. But they didn't want to lose they. They had per some, but, I mean, they, they want that per same, they want her to make the same money. So the only fight, they gonna have, they want the director to be. City input. And quite naturally, that mean the county's, they just gonna be where they at. And I don't see that, you know, and they wouldn't take that, why they never did join up with us. It been proposed before, but they would never join up with us because they want the city, they want control of, of the page.
And Commissioners, I would have to see how our Wilderness, uh, grant funding is affected for the library. If we, if our director was overseeing a third library, you know, is, is there a cutoff? We, can we say, well, that's not really our, our library per se, you know, so, yeah, it's a lot of.
Wilderness.
Details after, we would have to work out.
I appreciate.
Wilderness not in the city, right?
No, not presently, we are though.
I know.
Yeah. Well, getting back to where we're, uh, Mr. Chairman, from what I understand, what they're asking is, they want to be able to advertise. Well, they can advertise. They can advertise at the current pay for their library director. Which was what, thirty-five thousand?
Yes.
They can advertise all day long, we're, we're not holding that up. No, we've conditionally approved, when the budget gets finalized, possibly pay more.
Mm-hmm.
But we're not holding them up, they, they can.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, they can be, we're not holding them up.
I think they've advertised, and they have two, two, uh, local applicants, uh, that, I, from what I've been told, does not have, not even a bachelor's as yet. And then they have one from out west somewhere that does have their masters, but that candidate, I think, is like up at seventy thousand dollars, so I, I doubt, you know.
So they, they're just disqualified themselves, I mean, that's nothing.
Yeah, so.
They still advertise, we're not holding them up.
Ain't both the girls going to school, I mean, doing their, get their degree?
Uh, I, yes, I don't know, Commissioner, I haven't gone that far into discussion.
One in East Point, one in Carabelle, they doing, they doing online like Lisa did.
Mm-hmm. But Lisa came with her bachelor's and work, was working towards a masters. They're, they're saying the, the two, the one at East Point, the one in Carabelle, they don't even have their, their bachelors yet.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
That would not be appropriate.
Another discussion, Mike, during our budget hearings was, this number may come down.
Yep.
And that may be what they heard, so now they're wanting us to commit to a certain number, which is what Commissioner Jones was referring to, because the board decides to come down on that forty-five thousand dollar number, and you've already locked in and told them to advertise for that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it'd be wrong for you to cut that money out, and we don't know exactly where we at right then. So I think this is a way of saying, if you let's go ahead and advertise for it, and you're committing yourself, and we clearly told her that this number may come down. We can come down on the budget, we can't go up on the budget.
Yeah, we discussed it, Mr. Chairman.
So if the board makes a move here today to give them a number, then that's gonna be the number pretty much. And I don't think.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you can't make any formal budgeting decisions outside of a duly advertised budget public hearing anyway, so.
But that's what they're asking us to do.
You are, a- as we sit here today, you are limited to the maximum amount allocated to that position from your current budget, and no new number can be agreed upon unless you are in a formal public hearing considering your budget.
That's what she's asking us to do, is commit.
Can't do it.
So I have no action item for right now, basically.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, we'll get back with them.
Okay. We addressed number nine already, let's go on to number ten. At the July second meeting, the board authorized Attorney Shula to create a contract that would change the employment status of Ms. Nicole Sheppi from the interim plant operations director to an independent contractor that will report to this board directly on the status, status of all weaves building and facility. status of all Weems building and facilities. Serve as the county's project manager representative on special projects such as the roof replacement on the current main facility and a new EMS location in Appalachia Cola and Carabelle and new facility, and a new facility project. Ms. Sheppi would have also assisted me in my role as the county liaison to Weems. After Attorney Schuler created a contract, which he did a very good job, maybe too good of a job, some of you Commissioners reached out to me and stated that the path of Ms. Sheppi as an independent contractor would not produce the results and the expectations that you wanted. After taking all your concerns and expectations into consideration, I propose the following. Ms. Sheppi would remain in her current role as Weems interim plant operations director with the same salary and job responsibilities that she has now, but there will be a temporary change. This physician will report to the Board of County Commissioners, not the hospital's CEO, administrator. Since this physician has responsibilities that affect the operation of the hospital, the plant ops director will continue to interact with the CEO on a daily basis to provide updates and status reports on everyday responsibilities and duties and any task assigned by the CEO. As it relates to facilities, special building projects, life safety matters, the plant ops director will update the CEO to make sure that the CEO's concerns are addressed and suggestions considered when discussing these matters with the Board of County Commissioners. This physician will also assist with my role as a county liaison. I'm hoping this is what you guys, after I talk to, you know, we, I'll talk here separately, this is what you guys were asking for. I mean, if not, let me know and I'll go back to the drawing board again.
Sound good to me, but I wanna put in there, I, I want know if she accepted, no retaliation from the CEO. He got nothing to do with that what we want, not him.
I'll make that motion.
Understood.
I'll make that motion on behalf of the chairman and the statement he just made.
And I'll second it.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Burton.
Just some clarification.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Just as a term I've heard, which was just, was reminded to me earlier today, we don't want Ms. Sheppi to have two masters. We are in command and control again, and we wanna make sure that the pathway is clear, that she's representing that information to us, and that the hospital CEO is kept in the loop, but not that she has to pass through him every time. Would that be your feeling?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure that she's not confused in any way.
Yeah.
It's us.
And he, you know, that, he should like this, cause this giving him more time to work on that money. And we got, she work on the billing, and the billing belong to the county, so we need somebody to kinda watch for, watch out for us. So this a win-win situation for him and us. He wanting, if he don't eat, get the rules.
So he sees it, I mean, okay. Okay, so we got to vote?
Huh?
You guys gotta vote?
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass or no pass?
Good.
Okay. Item eleven. At your last meeting, I informed the board of the problem that your EMS station located at Larnark Village Fire Station. The board authorized seeking a court to renovate the building known as the old Carabelle Annex for a new EMS station on the eastern side of the county. Mr. Doug Schuler, Barnett Franz Zach Barlow and Schuler Architects met Ms. Sheppi there last week, and then he submitted an estimate with a high end cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, and a low end cost of a hundred and twenty thousand. To move this project along, Ms. Sheppi recommends approving up to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to complete this renovation project, but will work with Mr. Schuler to get the overall cost of the project as close to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars as possible. Am I correct, Ms. Sheppi? Board action to authorize spending up to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the Healthcare Surtax Trust Fund for this project. I will admit to this board, it came in late yesterday afternoon, and that's why we kinda split the difference for now, uh, and then we'll work, she will, we're not, we, she will work more with Mr. Schuler to kinda narrow down the price, because there was talk of electrical wiring for the generator. Off the top of my head, there was painting in there. We can probably get inmates to paint the building. You see, there's simple, there are things that we could probably narrow down the list, but I didn't wanna handicap cap the project by going too low. So again, I split it in half, and, but we split, we decided to split it in half, and that's what we're bringing to you today.
We're going back to the trust fund again?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I don't have anywhere else to turn.
Trying to tell that man, everything's trust fund.
We leased the, do we lease the building?
We don't own it?
I don't think so. Did we?
Probably call it the county annex then.
We all have DOT building, no?
I thought you had a hundred.
You can go look.
Aaron, I thought you had a hundred-year lease.
I believe it's a really long lease, and we're responsible for all maintenance on it, but I, I'm not aware of us.
I sure wish I'd known that last meeting.
I'm, I'm almost ready to go back to that Stooge comment.
I know.
Maybe we should table it and gather more information and not do this live.
Oh, what a day today, huh?
Either give it to us or that we got a hundred-year lease.
I think it's a really long-term lease, but I have to find it.
That the old state building y'all told me?
Yes, sir.
Cause I still don't think we can make changes to it.
We ain't had it for ten, so ninety more, we ain't gonna know about it.
So, so while Allen is looking, so are you guys saying that we can't make renovations?
Oh, we can make renovations. We're responsible for all maintenance. I mean, it's pretty much like, you know, any of the leases that the state gives us.
Yeah.
Well, how long, how long have we had the building?
We've had it for a long time.
So I guess your concern is?
Twenty years, thirty years?
Is that what your concern is?
Yes, yes.
Maybe it's easier to fix the, uh, the, the problems at the Larnark Village Fire Department first as opposed to spending that.
That is.
Those are big numbers.
It is.
That's been worked on as I speak.
Yeah, there's a lot of damage to that building.
As you are well aware. You are well aware that that's been worked on as I speak.
We have a fifty-year lease on the building expiring in twenty fifty-one.
Twenty fifty-one, okay.
Our department, so we know the time.
So I'm gonna ask Ms. Sheppi to come up as she's approaching, because my concern is, what condition is the, at Larnark Village, what condition is the station there?
I mean. The station's in poor quality. It has not been kept up, and they've, everything from HVAC units and, to plumbing. You have drains that are.
Building there, though.
The fire department.
Fire department.
Fire department.
And.
I know the hospital did a little for renovations under their lease, and they, I wanna say it was a total of five thousand dollars when they moved in initially.
And we have another problem out there, as I look for my notes as, as you're talking. So I was getting a, a AR report from the hospital yesterday, as I try to do before each, each meeting, and I got a little note that's saying, we have a, out there, they just got a bill from the fire department, I'm trying to find it in my notes, for a water bill.
Yes.
That they're telling us that we owe them, I gotta, nineteen thousand dollars is what the fire department wants us to pay out there for the water bill.
Oh, heck, no.
For what?
Water bill, they hadn't paid.
They, they have not, again.
They have filled that fire truck up, they have set there and pumped that fire truck full right there and want us to pay for it. They got a meter that they supposed to hook to the water tap that tells how much goes in that fire truck. We do it. You got a meter, you put on the pump, and it tells you how much water they've been filling up there, they want this county to pay for it. We're not doing it.
I know, so that's another, matter of uniform, sir, but, uh, that, that are some of the problems that we, it's, it's, it's beyond just the quality of the building, it's beyond the parties in the parking, I mean, there's, I mean, this isn't the first time we had to fight over a water bill.
Well, let me ask you a question. Is you, is the county got a land in, in, in Larnark?
Yeah.
The county?
Yeah, we got some over by the park over there, by the, uh, we're a little park in front of the fire sta, I mean, uh.
Big a piece of land.
Front of the, uh, the, uh, post office, by the post office, ain't that that yours? We got a park there.
Well, we have Class C Lowery Park over there by your city park. We have a lot over there.
By the Childers Hall.
What, what are we talking about?
The Childers Hall.
I think they put it somewhere that has like, it's a little picnic.
That's it, in front of Childers Hall, right there.
In Larnark.
Let's go after resource.
Yeah, back to Childers Hall, Allen, look, right there, it's, it's a county park there.
I was gonna say, couldn't we pull up?
Another, another.
Build a building there?
It's a county park right there.
Would it be cheaper?
Dedicated.
It would be about the same.
Is it dedicated or somebody?
It's dedicated.
We would have to see, we'd have to see the documentation to find out. If it's, if it's dedicated as a public park purpose, then you can't convert it into that type of.
I thought the county owned it, I just know the county.
We don't have the information to say one way or the other, we're just, we're just speculating right now.
So.
So we're tabling this for now?
Yes, so I guess, the thing here is to table this and bring back more options to the board, and you guys pick the lessons of all evils.
I'll make a motion to table this issue.
So, how long was that nineteen thousand dollar water bill over?
Oh, I don't, no, I don't, it was just a note I got, I can pull, I can have, I can have the hospital send it to me.
Yeah, cause one commode and a shower don't run that much in twenty-five years.
Actually, I was gonna send it, send it to the attorney, I was gonna bypass the board on this deal.
They filled that fire truck up.
The water bill, yes, sir.
More than one time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Ain't no more discussion on it. Plenty of, plenty of, but they ought to be cleaning people in the woods.
They would be well bathed then.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass or no pass?
It's not, it's not four-thirty yet. Um, item twelve.
We're working on it.
I guess so. Item twelve, attached to my report, these are easy, hopefully, attached to my report is the county's twenty nineteen Equal Employment Opportunity Plan, updated by Ms. Deborah Belcher. Board approval of this document, including the narrative, is a requirement for DOJ grants along with other type of grants, but most importantly, the DOJ grants, which the sheriff benefits from.
Second.
Thank you.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner. Commissioner Mast, all in favor? All opposed? That pass or no pass?
Item thirteen, Ms. Sarah Hives, Health Department sent an email, uh, which I attached, provides information was to be referred to as this flesh-eating bacteria. You have any questions he asks that you please give her a call. Item fourteen, uh, board action to support and authorize the chairman's signature on a resolution designating Saturday, September twenty-eighth, as Appalachia Cola National Esterine Reserve Day.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass or no pass?
My last item, uh, ah, to heck with it, we, we got approved for the land use plan. That's it, we're good, for the armory. Okay. Okay. We own a piece of land in Larnark.
Where was it at?
Yeah, it's a, all right, so you know the old village mall there, the parking lot?
That's what I'm talking about.
I, I didn't, it's fairly long and probably wide enough to hold a building.
It's, it's about fifty foot wide and about a hundred foot long.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
I see it.
But I see how much, when, when they figuring on it, see how much of.
That's all the building in parking there.
Sorry?
You'd have to have a place to park also.
Well, it's a hundred feet long. I mean, that's on the south side of the road. It's on the east side of the road.
Right, if you turn to the Childers Hall, if you come to Childers Hall and you pull up to it, it's a parking lot right here, it's just the other side of, it's a long park. There's plenty of room to put parking all out there, and you got all that parking by Childers Hall up there too.
Sir, that's private property.
Where?
For Childers Hall parking lot is, yeah, that's private property.
But you, all you.
Parking lot for Childers Hall, that's private property.
Yeah.
Done by the government.
But, I'm talking about the lot we got, it's enough.
The lot we have is by fifty, by a hundred, so I, I mean, it's bigger for a million parking handles.
Yeah.
All you, you, you got to have Amaland parking, you got to have the people who drive their cars, so it's big enough for.
I would think so.
Three or four cars, three cars in Amaland.
We'll figure it out, Commissioner.
Yeah, we tabled it anyways.
All right, well, just get the information and get back with us.
We'll figure it out.
No, I talked to City Carabelle, they own some right there beside it, a whole bunch of it.
Yeah, they do.
Thank you.
We swapped some out with. All right, next on the agenda will be Mr. Michael Schuler.
All right, Commissioners, it's late, late in the day, so I won't read everything. Um, in order to clarify the record, I'm requesting board action to approve the trade-in of a two thousand and two Caterpillar Motor Grader twelve H, serial number four XM zero three three two one, property tag A zero zero four one six seven. This is the trade-in for the recent purchase of the motor grader by the road department, and we just need to, to clarify the record for purposes of the, the auditor to take that trade-in off of your property records.
Stay moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass or no pass?
Second item is I've requested board authority from, to settle the ADA lawsuit filed by Mr. Juan Carlos Gill concerning, basically, his allegation that our website at the county does not comply with the ADA compatibility requirements. I'm requesting authority up to eight thousand dollars to settle the case. The, it's kind of hard to financially commit to continuing litigation if they're trying to settle the case for that, that small amount of money. The biggest issue to me is they want the county to spend a period of time developing a policy that you would adopt for ADA compatibility moving forward, so the biggest issue is to make sure they're not trying to get the county to agree to a legal standard that's not required by federal law. But obviously, there may be some questions about this settlement, so, any, any questions from you, from the board on this?
I, just a thought, I just think it was unfair fishing on their part. Apparently, they've done, I guess, massive.
Hundreds of these lawsuits. And it's not just this law firm, this is a nationwide trend around the country with various law firms filing lawsuits against multiple county and municipal governments, private corporations, uh, what they call Title III public facilities. For example, uh, gas stations that have these electronic advertisements on their pumps, they, but a group in South Florida has sued a company recently because that video board is not ADA compliant, so this is just a fertile field for churning of lawsuits and, and attorney's fees as far as I'm concerned, but.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, the, uh, the last time we went to a ARPC meeting, Michael went with me, several, several Commissioners from different counties in our region said that they're also going through the same process of settling lawsuits for ADA compliance issues.
Do we need to vote on that?
We, we have it, but I don't think there's even been a motion or a second yet, but if we're in discussion, you know, as a Title II agency, which is what Franklin County is, I mean, my, my legal opinion is, the ADA by its specific language, when you read the ADA, there's nothing in there that says websites must be compatible. Um, the Department of Justice has not even adopted any compatibility standards for websites. They have issued at various points in time, proposed rules, but they've retracted all of those probably two years ago, and they're not even considering adopting any ADA website compatibility, compatibility requirements at this time. But, you know, in good faith, if we can settle this lawsuit and stop spending public dollars and adopt a policy that seems reasonable and provides public access, why not do anything over with? So, that's kind of my.
The only, the only problem I have with it is what's gonna prevent them from turning around soon as soon as six months from now.
Because this case will resolve that and, in fact, I think it will provide us with some protection from other people coming in trying to file lawsuits against us.
It could just as easily, and I'm not trying to be, uh, slight. They could just as easily do a DBA under another name and file another lawsuit.
I was just gonna say that, um, I haven't been sued, but when I saw the county sue and I've had discussions with other clerks, I've actually just signed a contract with a company that's gonna make my, my website forms. Two K Web Group has made the county's website and the clerk's website ADA compliant. It's the documents and the forms and things like that that we put out there that are not compliant. So once this company does my website and gets me in compliance, I was gonna put him in touch with Michael. If we're pleased with him with my website, then the county may want to do that going forward.
Because the problem is, uh, that was Whitney's role. That was one of her biggest roles, to deal with planning and zoning, board of adjustment, all the things that the office deal, the forms and the minutes and everything, agendas we put up there. So that's, if you're good with them, I might have to go that same route.
Yeah, and it, it, it wasn't a big amount of money. I can't remember exact amount, but it was affordable and going forward, it'd be so much per document.
Yeah, that'll be our route to a commission.
I'll stay in touch with Michael as this process and this goes.
And I will say that Mr. Morone, back at the, the end of last year and beginning the first of this year, had purchased some software, the name of which I don't remember, but his office through Whitney was, on a going-forward basis, converting your documents for planning and zoning, your board of adjustment, your, I guess, your building department documents. As they were uploaded to the website, they were using that software to make the documents readable for those that have visual handicaps or, or blind. And the clerk's office was using that same software. But I, I know from talking, uh, not so much with Whitney, but with those in the clerk's office, it's, it's a, a multi-step, very time-consuming process.